Good morning. We're going to get started this morning with an invocation from Pastor Douglas Bell of Sooner Rose Baptist Church, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Griffin Cannon representing Girl Scout Troops 7309. Please stand as you are able.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you in Jesus's name, thanking you, Lord, for the day and this opportunity to serve you. I pray according to the Scriptures, you exhorte us to pray for our leaders, those that are in authority, and for all men. And we pray that you would be with us as we come today in the city council meeting. And, Lord, you also exhorte us in the Scriptures that we can pray to you, Lord, for wisdom. We ask and pray that you would give wisdom to each and every one of our city's leaders. Thank you, Lord, for our city, and thank you, Lord, for all that you've done and are doing. We pray and ask that you would just lead them and direct them in all the decisions that they face and the things that they make on behalf of the citizens and the citizenry and the city itself. I pray and ask that you would, according to the Scriptures, you're a God of order, and you say that all things be done decently and in order. And we pray and ask that all the proceedings today will be just that, decent and in order. We ask and pray your blessings upon our mayor and our city councilman and other city leaders and our city. And we thank you, Lord, for all that you're doing in it as we hear in the news. And we just praise you and thank you, Lord, for your goodness and your graces. We ask and pray these things in Christ's name. Amen. Amen.
Will everybody sing the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Griffin, and thank you, Pastor Bell. I call this meeting of the city council to order. And we have no items at Items 3 and 4, which brings us to Item 5, City Manager Reports.
We don't have any city managers' reports this morning, other than the claims and payroll, and that can be found on OKC.gov.
All right. Thank you. Item 6 is Journal of Council Proceedings. We have Items A and B we could take with one motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8, Revocable Permits and Events. Item 8A is a revocable right-of-way use permit. Oh, 7. Yes. Request for Uncontested Continuances. We have Items 9A and 11I that are already deferred to upcoming meetings. What else might we have, Mr. City Manager?
We have two items on page 16, Item 11AB1, Unsecured Structures. Both of these are stricken from the agenda. Item E, 221 Southwest 38th Street, the owner is secured. And Item G, 1136 Southwest 61st Street, the owner is secured. That's all the items that I have.
All right. Now we're at Item 8. 8A is a revocable right-of-way use permit with Downtown Oklahoma City Partnership to hold the Oklahoma City Tree Lighting Festival. I don't see a slip, but if you would mind introducing yourself.
Hello. Good morning, council. Thank you for having me. I am Olivia Branscombe with Downtown Oklahoma City Partnership. We are requesting the closure of Mickey Mantle Avenue in Bricktown on November 13th for the Oklahoma City Tree Lighting Festival presented by Global Payments. We're really excited for the 24th year of the festival. We're going to have a great program of two hours of entertainment, from everything from Kai Dawson and the Experience to Oklahoma Opry and the Oklahoma City Ballet. And we'll also have the mayor lighting the Christmas tree at 6:00 PM. So come join us as we kick off the holiday season in downtown Oklahoma City, November 13th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM.
Very cool. I think Councilman Hinkle is carrying Word 7 items this morning.
Wish you the best of luck and move forward with approval. And don't let David play with fire lighting a tree.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now we'll recess council and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have Items A and B we could take with one motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now we'll adjourn OCMFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. I want to draw your attention to the fact that there was amendment to the city council agenda that was properly noticed that adds an Item C here. That Item C is the schematic design plans with the city of Oklahoma City for the new Oklahoma City arena. And we actually also have a presentation associated with that item. So maybe we'll start there.
Yes. David Todd, our MAPS Program Manager, will do an introduction of this item. As you can imagine, that in the design of something as significant as this arena, the work that goes into this, and I call this the early stages, and I don't want to offend the team, the early stages of design, but they've done a significant amount of work to get us to this place, and there's even more to come. And just really appreciate the teamwork and the partnership here. And so I'll let David introduce the item.
Right. Good morning. David Todd, MAPS Program Manager. As City Manager said, a lot of people have worked a lot of hours already, but just recognize that this is about 30% complete on the design. But as part of the development agreement, we bring it to you to keep you up to date as to what's going on. Today, we have Rob Svedberg from TBS and David Manica from Manica Architecture is here. David Manica is going to take you through where we are on the design right now.
Thank you, David. Good morning, council members. Nice to see you all. Mayor, good to be here. I appreciate the invitation to talk about the project. And I'm honored, on behalf of the entire design team, CAICON, and of course, the Thunder, to be here today. There's an army of people working on this project, as was already mentioned, and everyone's heart is 100% in it, and I'm excited to have a chance to walk you through it. Quick location, as if no one doesn't know where it's going. But this is a very special site, and I want to take the time to say that. I've been working on these projects around the world for 30-plus years, and this is really a dream site for us to do this project with you all. Right across the street from the Myriad Gardens, a nice spacious site with plenty of elbow room for circulation around it and access, and right, it's a part of the downtown city. So it's really an incredible opportunity and transformative project. And we're excited, not just to be a part of it, but about what we've come up with together with the collaborative input of everyone on the project. I'm just going to point out very quickly a few key points. So the arena is generally centered on the site. That gives us really nice flexibility around the whole project for people to circulate and access it. We have large entrance plazas on the northwest and southwest corners. The beginnings of some ideas for Thunder Alley then on Ron Norick Boulevard, right across the street from Myriad Gardens. There's a parking structure and parking garage on the eastern side. And then we also have entrances on the southeast corner as well to help access from that, those areas of the site, and then Bricktown. Just zooming in a little bit more, you can see the open-air truck dock on the northeast corner. This will be below grade, so you won't see the trucks and all the servicing of the building from street level. So I think that's a real plus as well. And again, the large entrance plazas with grand staircases up to the main plaza on the western side. I'm not giving you the janitor's tour of every level of the building, I promise. That would be annoying and boring for you. But I do want to help you understand the progress that we're making and generally how the building stacks. So the event level, as we call it, is slightly below ground. That's where the parking for the team and the buses and the concert trucks will all come. Again, I said below grade, so that you can't see it all from the street. That's unlike Paycom currently, where you can see all those things at street level. This is the hardest-working and sort of least-appreciated level of the building. We have some premium seats down there, but that's also where all the locker rooms go, all the plant areas, all the support areas of the project. So a lot of these areas are back-of-house, but I can confirm for you that we have the area in the project to make this a first-class building. This is the kind of building that concert tours are going to want to come to, because it works so easily for them to load the building and unload it. And then, of course, there's an incredible compound, let's say, for the Thunder to keep them competitive in the market, which we all know is important and sort of a success story. And then there are some, like I said, some premium areas that are not unusual for buildings like this around the country and even consistent with some of the amenities that you already enjoy in Paycom. Now we're at street level, so this is more of a mezzanine level, actually. We have entrances into the building at street level. And then we also have some offices for the operations of the building. It's nice in this particular building, because they're not in the basement of the building. They have some natural light and some easy access at street level, too. So that's a real plus for the people that get to go to the arena every day and work, keep it a success. Team Store located on the west side, off the beginnings of the Thunder Alley Plaza, across the street from the Myriad Gardens. Now let's go up to the main concourse. This is really the main level of the building for a great population and capacity of the building. You'll see, what I want to show you here is really the beginnings of an incredible story of the project. You know, I came here without any preconceptions of what I wanted the design to be, and I really listened to all of you, actually. We had some early meetings with some of you in the visioning session, and we really listened carefully to what we wanted the project to be. Words like togetherness, unity, transparency, authenticity began, were really ringing true from everyone's perspective. And this project's really about a circle and the symmetry of that, the purity and the meaning of what it means to be sort of together in unity around this space. And you can see in this plan, I pulled everything inside the concourse, so that you walk around 360 degrees, and you always have views out of the building. And I'll show you some renderings in a second. I know you've seen them as well, but I want to tell you a little bit more about those. We have a good distribution of food amenities and toilets, so there's more toilets in this building than there are in the current building. I know everyone's always curious about that, but also more food amenities. So it's a more comfortable, spacious, sort of elevated experience for everyone in the building. Next level up is the suite level. It's configured in a horseshoe configuration that is intentional, so that when the concerts roll in, the concert can play to all the suites, and there's no suites behind. That's a really important sort of programming design element for the project. And then also at this level is the beginning of the Thunder offices, which you can see on the east side. So those offices are behind the stage during concerts. As I want to point this slide out, when you see in the drawings, you see a sort of yellow cream color. That's open concourse area. And you can see here how the suite level looks down to the concourse, to the main concourse below. So what I'm beginning to do is stack all of these levels of the building into one volume of space, so that everyone's together and can see everyone else in the building. That's really unusual for a building like this. Usually, when you go to the upper concourse, you're cut off from everyone else in the building, and you don't really see or get a sense of the rest of the crowd. That's not the way it is in this building. Here, you can see I'm moving up through the various Thunder offices on the east side here to get to the upper concourse. And you can see another 360-degree outer concourse that looks down into that volume of space. So again, that idea of togetherness, symmetry, unity, everyone being in one space, that was at the heart of this project. And again, at this level, really great distribution of toilets and food amenities, spacious concourses, great views out of the building. And again, more amenities at this level than you currently enjoy at Paycom. Plant areas and catwalks, again, maybe not as important to you all. And the spectators will never see this, but this is what brings concerts back. This is what makes the building really easy to operate, load and unload. And I'm absolutely confident that this project will be at the top of the list for tours, because of all the amenities and the built-in infrastructure that it'll accommodate. All right. Now we're in the renderings, so you can really see its presence on the site here. This is looking towards the west. You can see the Myriad Gardens in the background. You can see that circular transparent facade of the project. And the parking garage happens to be in the foreground of this particular shot. And you can see the open-air truck dock down below grade and how it basically sits adjacent to and a part of the downtown skyline. It's really important for me that the city of Oklahoma City be the backdrop for the entire experience when you're in the building. And so as we get into these interiors, you'll see how, as you walk around these open concourses, you'll catch views of the city and the park and the skyline and the sunset from every angle. This is a great shot of the corner, looking at the grand staircase up to the main plaza and the entrance at the main concourse. And you can see how you look through that building, and it becomes a lantern. And it's really iconic, you know, building on the skyline and something that becomes, again, very transparent and animated. This is a great shot of the main concourse here. You can see that wide 360-degree concourse with the inboard amenities. The suite level slightly above it, just above where it says Oklahoma City Thunder, that's the suite level. And then that curving shape just below the highest ceiling, that's the upper concourse. This is another great shot, looking down into the club, more at suite level. And you begin to get an idea of what those views out of the building will look like. Inside the suite levels, there's a lounge area outside the suites for the loge boxes, theater boxes, and the suites. Again, with those incredible views out to the city, and the city becomes the backdrop for the entire experience for everyone in the building. Upper concourse here, you can see that balcony edge looking down onto the main concourse and out to the city. We use a lot of natural wood materials in the project. It was important to us that it feel sort of timeless and sophisticated in its design. So the way the facade is transparent, and you can look through the building, and in a lot of ways, the interiors of the project become a part of the facade of the design as well, intentionally. So you can see how we were very careful about the material selection and the way that, we call it the vessel, the vessel of the experience sits inside that glass drum.
Hey, David, if you could just go back one slide.
Please.
I just want to point out, I'm pretty sure this is an older slide. This has been a topic of conversation, just lest anyone be concerned. That railing is now significantly higher than what is shown here.
Mayor, and I also appreciate the interruption. I should have invited you to ask me questions. I'm certainly go backwards with anything, but yeah.
It's a minor thing. Other than when I first saw that slide, it was like nightmare fuel. So it has been raised, and it's much safer now.
Yeah, that's right. I appreciate that point. We did play with the height of that quite a bit. We've now pulled it up to bar height with a glass railing that goes even higher, so you don't have that sort of awkward feeling of vertigo at the end. We want people to feel comfortable up there in every way. And now the seating bowl, which I'm very, very proud of. And this is a little bit of a technical explanation, but it's important. I don't want to take the time to explain it. Your existing building, Paycom, is designed around a hockey rink. It is not prioritized for basketball. And what that does is, as you can imagine, that the hockey rink is actually longer than a basketball court. All the seats in your existing building, and many other buildings like it, honestly, are designed around the hockey rink, and that pulls the ends further away from the basketball court than would be optimal. This design still can accommodate that kind of configuration, but we pulled the ends in very tight and optimized them for basketball. So the ends of the seating are much, much, much closer to the basketball court. And what that does is it will create an even more sort of dynamic and exciting atmosphere in the bowl environment than you can in Paycom. I know that's hard to imagine, because you have one of the loudest, most incredible sort of fan bases here in Oklahoma City, and it animates the existing bowl very, very much. But this is going to turn that up to 11, basically. It's going to be incredible. Really excited about it. And also, I just want to highlight how everyone in this bowl, in the seating environment, feels like it's part of one crowd. And we've taken a lot of time and a lot of care to make sure that the delineation or the differentiation in the diversity of seating in the bowl is blurred a little bit, so that everyone feels as though they're part of the same experience in the same seating bowl. And hopefully, you can see that here. Very seamless bowl, no vomitories. You know, everything feeds from the back, so it's really dense and really intense. And of course, it's optimized for concerts as well. It's not just Thunder. This will be a premier entertainment facility. And we've been very careful to make sure. We've gotten a lot of input from ASM and other programming partners to make sure that it's optimized in every way for those events as well. I'll go through next steps really quickly, and then I'd be open to answer any questions that you might have. that you might have. But as David Todd mentioned, we are in, in the, still in the early days of design, I would say. We are wrapped up with schematic design, which David Todd rightly said is about 30% of the total effort. And there's a lot more hard work to come. And I'm excited about the, the design progress, but I'm even more excited about the work that we have yet to do and the way it's going to bring the whole project to life.
Questions?
So what you're saying is because this time it's not designed for a hockey rink, it's designed for a basketball court, all our fans will be sitting closer to the court, correct?
Yeah, that's exactly right, especially on the ends.
So how loud can it be?
How loud can it be? Louder than it is now. I, all I can tell you is, it's a matter of physics. Basically, air is your number one inhibitor to volume, right? It's like the difference between me yelling in your ear or yelling at you from across the hall or across the room. It's the same thing with a crowd. So if you suck the air out of an environment and you put everyone closer together, it gets louder. So the, the volume of the building will of course depend on how loud the crowd is, but I assure you that this building is intentionally designed to be even louder and even more exciting than, than the existing one.
And then you mentioned concerts and third-party events.
Yes.
The one, knock's not a good word, but things I hear once in a while is about loading dock capacity at the current facility and then acoustics. Can you tell us a little bit about loading and acoustics and how we're going to improve that?
Yeah, very good. So the loading dock has been designed to have sort of optimal turning radiuses and holding areas for the trucks as they come in and unload and then come in, load, unload quickly and get out. That's really the number one thing that we have to do. The other thing that's really important in this building is the rigging grid. So you have an optimal rigging grid. So what happens is that crew comes in, they need to lift everything up quickly and then get the next truck out, that truck out and the next truck in. So I, you know, we have really optimized the loading and the adjacency of that dock to the rigging area. And of course, all the back-of-house support for, for stars, they're going to want to come back to. With regard to acoustics, yeah, we have a soffit in the, in the, you can see it in the, in this shot here. There's a soffit that goes around the upper deck, so that's going to bounce sound back down for, for concerts, for, for sporting events, I mean, and actually make that, make that upper deck sound even louder. But we're also, of course, fine tuning the attenuation of the reverberation inside the bowl to make sure that it's optimal for concerts as well. So it is a delicate balance between making the building loud for sports and quiet for concerts, but we're finding that, we're finding that sweet spot.
Great, thank you.
I just want to say one last thing, if that's, if that's my closing, if these are my closing You know, I mentioned that, that I didn't come here with preconceptions and I listened. And, and one of the things that we did at the very beginning was I met with some of you and we had the visioning session, and that meant a lot to me. And I just want to help explain, actually, I got an email or a call from, from one of the council members shortly after that. And she said, David, I really hope that you don't look down when you think about this project. Like, we don't need more red dirt, you know, analogies. She said, I hope you look up and that you think about this project in wonder and that you think about our sunsets and you think about the sort of skyline and you think about what it means to look up at this project instead of looking down at the ground. And that really hit me. And I hope that when you look at this project, you can see that kind of inspiration, that kind of wonder, that kind of feeling of looking up and gazing up rather than looking down at the ground. So I appreciate that input and thank you very much for today.
Well, thank you, David. And obviously, we're well aware of your reputation and we've been very grateful that we've had this opportunity to work with you. And certainly since July, I think the design has been received across the city with much fanfare. I think people are very, very excited.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, good day.
All right, well, that concludes our presentations on the PPA agenda. We have items A through C we could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And by the way, that item will appear again on an amended consent docket. Well, now we'll adjourn OCPPA and reconvene as the council, where we are in fact at item nine, the consent docket. One item was previously deferred, and we do have a scheduled presentation for item BQ. Is there anything else that a council member wishes to pull out for a separate vote or conversation or question?
Can we pull?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
For conversation, AS, please.
Can we pull item H out for a separate vote, please?
Sure, okay, so AS.
AS, as in Sam.
And then Councilman Carter, what was your item?
H, hotel.
For a separate vote.
And then we have a little discussion on item W and item AD.
W and what was the other one, AB? Anything else?
Yes. Where did it go? It's about the May Avenue Bridge and it is AZ. Please.
AZ, okay. Anything else? And just to draw to your attention, as previously previewed, item nine CC is a new item that was on an amended agenda that was properly noticed. That is the mirror item to what we just discussed, the schematic design plans with PPA for the new Oklahoma City Arena. Okay, we will now take these items as discussed in order, which means we'll have a separate vote on item nine H. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes six to one. And then next up, we will have a little bit of a discussion about item W. Councilman Stone?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious on this, if we, I know this is just an introduction, but I'm curious if we've done any kind of a traffic count on it?
We have, Jeff Butler, Planning Director, we have not yet. We can look into that, certainly. There is some information available for the streets itself. It kind of depends on the, we have some availability of information we can get back to you on if that's desired. There's a few different data sources we can look at.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it? All right. Well, then we'll stay with you for item AB.
Thank you, Mayor. This one confuses me just a little bit, honestly. I guess I have a couple of different questions on this thing. It looks like formerly it was roughly 570,000, now it's jumping up to 650,000. And then another part of that is, since we have been doing the health services with the fire department, I know we've been utilizing in that, and I know that I have talked to some firefighters that told me that the fire department is doing fantastic work in that mode. So I'm kind of curious, when we've started kind of branching that up, why we're accelerating or at least going higher on this side when we would think we'd be utilizing it a little bit less?
Mm-hmm. I, I think, and Jeff, do you know, is Jared Shaded here? Jared could speak to it. So basically, I'll help answer this, like, basically what this does is gives us the homeless outreach teams, that they're specifically going out and doing direct outreach for homeless. They participate when we do a camp closure, they're involved with that. If we've got a problem area, they go out and make that contact. So they're out there on the street trying to help every day. So it's a different work than what Fire does. And what they're doing is working, trying to get connection with the folks that are homeless and trying to help them get into services and get help. So it's a different, it's a different type of service.
Gotcha.
Isn't that called Key to Home?
What's that?
Isn't that called Key to Home?
This team is part of Key to Home. They serve as part of Key to Home.
Jared Shaded, the Oklahoma City Planning Department, I'm the Program Planner for Homeless Services. City Manager Freeman is right, this is a different type of project. While the name of the organization can be a little misleading, given the type of, given that it's called Mental Health Association, this is not specifically mental health specific outreach. It serves all clientele. And yes, they do assist with Key to Home. They're not one of the primary, like contracted specifically for just that purpose, they provide more services than just Key to Home, but they do participate in the camp project with Key to Home.
One of the recommendations that came back from the homelessness task force was that we had these teams that go out into the city. And we debated, do we do that in-house or we do that with other services, you know, contracted services? We made the decision to contract these services, mental health, we did an RFP, Mental Health Association proposal, and we've worked with them. But it's specifically, it's Mental Health Association, but like Jared said, it's directed at going out and making direct contact with people who are homeless.
So my big problem with this is that for some reason, we have a really big issue with transient crime. And we're not addressing it, I don't believe, in any way. And I'm not putting that blame on anyone else. I think it's council's fault. I think we've got to come together, we've got to figure out some way to be able to address the transient crime issues. And I can tell you in my ward over at 44th and I-35, right? We've had Key to Home, I mean, it was horrendous. Key to Home went in there, cleaned it out, cleaned it up, it was great, and they're all back. We've got crack houses over there, we can't do anything about those. We've got all the transients are coming back in again and committing crimes on the businesses in that area. And I get calls on it all the time from surrounding businesses.
It, it is something we're focused on, and it's like, the other thing I would mention is recognizing this, like when we've got problem areas, trying to get focused on that with a police response. This part of it is definitely not an enforcement part. This is really trying to make the connection, build the trust, build the relationship so we can help get people into services and housing. The other is the homeless outreach team with police, which you know is a very small unit. They also are engaged, they have the ability to engage with the enforcement, but they're also another arm that's there from police, trying to make that connection and develop the relationships so we can help encourage people not to be involved in this activity. When we do have to get to that place, we do enforcements and we will arrest people if we have to. But it's really the goal is trying to help them get out of the situation that they're in. But it's definitely, you know, 44th, we can get back and look at that area again. I know periodically, most of our camp closures, and Jamie Caves is here too, but most of our camp closures, we've had success with keeping them closed. We'll have a few people come back in, but the teams can go out and reach out, help connect with them and try to keep people from camping in those areas again. That's a particularly difficult one that I think we may have to go back and run again. I think it's just one that we've got to be focused on continuing this. And I think this work too, it's, it's an imperfect work, you know, it's, you're dealing with people who have really, are in difficult situations in their lives and trying to get them help, you know, we'll have people that come in and we get them help and then they fall back into it. And it's like, you just got to stay at that. And I think it's that balance of where we have to, we have to enforce the law, but it's like, if enforcement isn't going to solve homelessness, and that's what we really have tried to focus on, is making sure, we're trying to focus to where we can provide the services and make the connection. So we're balanced on that in our approach, and I want to make sure that we're staying focused there. We can go back and check that area again.
So I'm all for helping the homeless, right? Those that are needing some help and seeking some help, man, I want to help them as much as we possibly can. The problem I have is that a lot of those homeless don't, when I say a lot of those homeless, I'm talking about a very specific area, right? They don't want help. They don't care. They, they want to be able to raise some funds, right? So they can do what they need to do. And, I mean, there's just, there's a lot of businesses over in that area that are just continuing to decline. So I don't know, I don't understand necessarily why we're raising this one when we still don't have a way to deal with transient crime. That's kind of me personally is, I'm like, until we figure out a way to work on that side of it as well, I have a problem with it.
Yeah, I just want to go on the record, I agree 100% with what Todd just said. In the past, my, the number one call I received was always about roads or potholes. And today, the number one call I receive is about homelessness. And we just need to keep thinking, I know Jamie's working hard, but, and, and we all want to pitch in and we all want to help, but like I said, the number one call I get is on homeless issues in my ward.
So should we defer this for a couple of weeks and talk about it?
I would ask that we move forward with this because I think whatever else we do, this still needs to happen. Like, we can't take this part out of what we're doing. Like, it's got to be an important part of this. We can defer it and move it forward and, and discuss it again. I'm still going to come back with whatever else happens to recommend that we go forward with this partnership, with them continuing to provide this service while we're working on trying to find other solutions. I don't think minimizing this part of the, of the plan or this part of the program is helpful.
Can I? Hi, Jared.
How are you?
How are you doing? Can I ask how many people serve on Jamie's street outreach team? Like, how many people serve on it?
I'm going to turn that over to Jamie.
That's wonderful, thank you. Well, hi there, Jamie, good morning.
Hi, good morning. Ask the question again, how many people serve on my team?
Yeah, yeah, forgive me. How many people literally serve on the street outreach team? Like, on this?
On the street outreach team, it's five teams. So there's 10 people that are serving on the street outreach team. And that's for the Community Response Outreach Team that responds to our Action Center tickets and the Housing Focused Outreach Team that's helping create pathways to move people into housing instability and, and off the streets.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, I just want to make sure I am, and feel free to correct me, there are kind of two moments here, as we just heard Counselor Carter mention. So there's the Key to Home, which is the second one you were just mentioning. So we have the street outreach teams that are going out to the encampments, just as we also heard from Counselor Stone when Key to Home went out there. So that's one time the street outreach teams are responding. The other, if I'm hearing you correctly, is when residents report someone experiencing homelessness to the Action Center. So in each of these two instances, that activates the street outreach team to go out?
That's correct. They kind of work in conjunction with each other, so the Community Response Outreach Team will respond to Action Center tickets. So a community member sends in a text, email, whatever, that there is someone that needs support, the Community Response Outreach Team goes and engages. And if they go out twice and there are people at the same location, like the people are staying at this location, then they will transfer that over to the Housing Focused Outreach Team. The Housing Focused Outreach Team will continue to engage, they'll go by like weekly, they're wanting to build rapport, meet basic needs and help connect to services. And then in addition to, we have the Encampment Re-Housing Initiative, which you all know is when we select a site for closure, and then the Housing Focused Outreach Team goes in every single day and works very intensively on that location until we're able to move those folks into housing within four to six weeks.
How many people at I-44 in Penn, whenever we, I want to say it was December of '23, how many people at Interstate 44 in Penn turned down the services of that street outreach team? I believe we housed 17. How many said no?
I would have, I would have to pull that number up, but it's, overall, 93% of people living in encampments that have been offered housing have accepted. Some are a little higher, some are a little lower, but all are in that vicinity.
Okay. So to my colleagues, I am not a begging person, so I'll choose a different verb. I implore us, implore. We not make the same mistake that the great city of Salt Lake City made a few years ago when they took this approach. They took this approach. They hired street outreach teams, they went out, they did exactly the work we just heard Jamie describe. Homelessness numbers went down in Salt Lake City, and so their council and mayor said, great, mission accomplished, dropped the banner, and they stopped funding that service. Guess what went up? Homelessness again. We, you think it's bad now, friends, if we stop this service, it will get... We, you think it's bad now, friends. If we stop this service, it will get worse. It is not my wish or desire to see homelessness get worse. And if you're going, "Well, it's pretty bad right now," I agree. I, hear me, I agree. I was, something I've had to reckon with. I don't know about you all as counselors, something really in the last week that's been hitting me kind of harder. I can't remember which of you I might have been discussing this with, but now when I go out into the city, and maybe it's just a byproduct of being a city counselor, but now when I go out into the city, all I see are the problems. I see the potholes. I see the lack of sidewalks where I think they need to go. I see the development opportunities. I see the homelessness. I see it. It's all I see. And I have to literally intervene to see then the progress we're making on when we were building the new sidewalks or whatever it might be. But I see what you're seeing. I, please do not misunderstand. I would be gaslighting you and lying to you if I got up here and said, "Counselor Stone, what you're talking about, that's just not the reality." It absolutely is the reality. We have to acknowledge that, of course. So, understand that solidarity. What I am imploring us to do in this moment is to literally look at the examples where other cities have turned away when they were making the progress of stabilizing people in their cities experiencing homelessness and connecting them to those services and to the housing to stabilize them. That's not to say that everyone out there, there are sometimes people out there who, they're not ready for it and they're going to commit whichever crimes. That is that too, but it's apparently about that 7%. But sometimes that 7%, whether it's homelessness or whether it's people with gun violence, they, their numbers might be smaller, but their impact can be mightier. And you see it in the gang world too. It's not everyone living in a neighborhood is in a gang, but it's that smaller number who are the meanest and the loudest and the most violent, and they're causing the most disruption. So, I just really want to pause and acknowledge that truth and that reality. I don't want to get into a back and forth up here of going, "This isn't a problem." We absolutely have to acknowledge that. But being in the spirit of solution-driven policies, we know that Houston reduced homelessness by 64% with this approach, and we know the Salt Lake City example. The thing that held Salt Lake City back is, as I just said, the thing that's holding Houston back is that they used, you remember this, temporary funding to build housing, temporary funding, which was ARPA. And then ran out, like, ARPA runs out. And so now they're stuck. Like, they can't finish the job because they can't identify a funding source to keep increasing their housing supply. I think the great news about the city of OKC right now is that we just approved in our bond funding to increase our housing supply. So, we're about to increase our housing supply, and we're not just going to do it willy-nilly. You as a council member, all of us will be working with Jamie and the Planning Department to shape the policy about the type of housing we're going to need to really address this. Could it have been more money? Now, Todd, you know I would have, I would have gone further, but it really is about supply, and it's about her team. And I'll wrap up by saying this for everyone's consideration. The reason why I asked, 12 people, 12 people, mental health providers and case managers, are responsible for going out to Ward 4, I-44, and you said, I-35 and 44th? That same 12 group of people, think about this, OKC, that same 12 group of people, case managers and mental health providers, are responsible for going to Counselor Stone's Ward to Interstate 35 and 44th Street. It's the same team that has to go over here to Interstate 44 in Pennsylvania, who also have to go to 23rd and MacArthur, who also have to go to 122nd in Pennsylvania, who also have to go to 240 in Penn. 12 people, 621 square miles. I would go further. I think instead of talking about deferring, we should be doubling down and recruiting more people for these teams so that they can be even more strategic in the work they're doing. I, that same, that Salt Lake City example haunts me and has haunted me for the six years since I've learned it. And so that's what I, and by the way, I would love the opportunity to go to a Salt Lake City with this council and to sit with their mayor and council. And we should have the strongest questions possible when we do, or if we need a virtual meeting. But we need to ask them what happened and why they took their foot off the pedal with their Street Outreach Teams, how it made them fall backward and see an increase in homelessness. So that, something this council does really well, and our city manager and mayor too, is we study best practices. We have been doing that for all six years that I've been on this council. We study best practices and we take lessons learned. But I hear you about the crime. I'm worried about it. I see it every day with just the issues that we need to address, but I'm here to tell you, the only way we're going to address it is by stabilizing the folk we can, and then the, then we're going, then we do need to be a bit more surgical and strategic about that 7% that is going to be the tougher population, just tougher in terms of the despair and the misery and sometimes the crime that comes from the desperation, the acts of desperation, the crime, whatever it might be. But I implore this council, we, it is in our city's best interest in terms of public safety to not turn back the clock, but to instead go forward and maybe even double down, triple down. 12 people for 621 square miles just does not strike me as enough. Thank you for hearing that.
Thank you, Councilman. And I totally agree that the work that these people are doing, y'all are doing great work. The problem that I have is we're not addressing that other side, right, which is putting businesses out of business, which means people lose their job, which means there's more of an opportunity for them to become homeless as well. And it's just, I feel like we're in a vacuum there. Does this stuff need to continue? 100% agree. I'm still, I would agree with Councilman Carter that maybe we defer it because I still have some questions on why there's a 20% increase on it. Overall though, I mean, it's great work. I totally get it. But I just don't feel that we're focusing on, on the other side that's putting businesses out of business.
Are you going to make a motion to defer?
So, to the point of the increase?
Might I clarify something here? The project, that funding for the overall funding for this project is actually not being increased. Previously, there was $75,000 that was coming out of ESG funds, that is federal. Now, there are $75,000 coming out of opioid.
So, it wasn't included in this contract?
No. ESG is contracted completely separately. So, it would not, might not have shown up on this contract.
And we're using some of our opioid abatement funds for a portion of this program that does deal with helping people with, who are dealing with crisis of addictions and things like that. So, what you're saying is overall, the, there's not an increase in what we're doing now. We had an ESG contract before that was separate because it's a grant program, and we have this program, and now we're just combining the two.
Correct.
So, I was, I was trying to check on that to make sure that I was clear.
But with that being said, then we don't even have a clear accounting of all the funds like we've even been asking for.
Of this program?
Of this program, of all of it. And when we've, when we've sat down, we've asked for these, these statements. So, I'm still going to push forward for a two-week deferral so that we can have some meetings, get some understanding and understand this thing better. Maybe we need to put more money into it. Maybe 20% isn't enough growth. Maybe we need to look at this, but I'd like to have those questions answered.
Okay.
I had some food for thought. A couple of years ago, I was on a panel with one of the ex-mayors of Norman, and she said something that struck me as very odd. She goes, "It doesn't matter how much we build or how much we do, they keep coming." The better we get at solving the homeless problem, the more homeless we end up with. And that's, like I said, that's just food for thought. I thought that was very odd coming from her as a proponent for, you know, homeless advocacy. But I was, I was in a meeting with her and the Cleveland County Sheriff at the time, and the look on his face was like, "Well, what'd you expect?" And the look on her face was very perplexed. So, thank you.
I just want to say, like, there's no data that supports that statement. We, we know what is, how, what percentage of people in our last point in time count became homeless in Oklahoma City, not somewhere else?
76%.
Yeah. I mean, there's just no data that demonstrates that. And the rest of them came from somewhere else in Oklahoma, which is certainly possible. But this idea, every city in America, every mayor in America tells me, everyone in their community thinks their homeless people came from somewhere else, and it's just not true. So, I just, I know people still say that. I just always feel compelled whenever people say that to say that there's just no evidence that that's the case. So, I think these are our friends and neighbors and our family members, for the most part, 76% anyways, and we got to figure out how to get them off the street. And that's, and I think people that kind of, the whole spectrum of politics have that in common. They want them off the street, whether it's through empathy or whether it's not, they want the same thing, to get them off the street. But, but again, I don't see any evidence, and I'm certainly receptive to different data, but I see no evidence that people are coming from elsewhere or that different services are somehow attracting people. We've just never seen that in Oklahoma City, and I don't know any city that has. California's a little different situation. Weather's so nice, I think they do maybe draw people from around the country. But we have not seen any evidence here. If you have any response, of course.
I'm just telling you what she told me. I didn't ask for data.
People say it all the time.
And another thing that is a huge issue is the 1,900 evictions that happen every month in Oklahoma County. I mean, we can't solve a problem with the funnel that big coming that way. So, I mean, that's a whole other monster.
As you know, we, we like lead the country in that, if not, close to it.
I think we're in the top six.
Yeah, yeah.
But I would say, if y'all are going to defer this, which I will not be supporting, because I, I will tell you right now, never will the day come that I will go back to Ward 2 and tell them that, that I have done anything other than taking the best practices to address this issue and that I think we should just pedal to the metal. And it is such a great day, I think, in our country where you can, across political parties, someone who is a registered Republican running the city in a nonpartisan body and a Democrat over here, both of us, through research, and mayors across this country saying, "There is a solution to this, and we should be doing more of it." I just think that is a wonderful opportunity and a bit of a mandate to go out there and actually address public safety and to stabilize people and to stabilize our city. And I would implore us not only to just move forward, but if you're going to take two weeks to defer, then we should bring a seriousness to that two weeks to really drill into what will it take to get to that harder-to-reach 7%. And in front of us, we have Jamie, who I'm sure would be able to do that deep dive with us, but that, take that, take that time to actually dig into what it would take. I loved your openness, by the way, Counselor Carter. Maybe it is more money. I believe it is. And I think it's all hands on deck. I think the private sector has an opportunity to really continue investing the way they have with the Key to Home. And we should be grateful that they have stepped up to match what we are doing at the city level. But I would implore this council, do not turn backwards and use the next two weeks to really dig in to the, to the crime part. I, I, I mean, truly dig in. So, thanks.
I don't understand why you're trying to politicize this thing. To me, it's absolutely not political in any way. I mean, I'm in total agreement with you that great work is being done. Again, I appreciate everything y'all are doing. I think it's up to council to sit here and go, "Okay, but how are we going to address the other 7%, if you will?" I think the number is higher than that, but somehow we've got to be able to address that because it is crushing businesses in those areas.
So, I wouldn't say I'm politicizing it. What I'm mentioning is political parties. And I literally just said that I think it is a wonderful day, Counselor, when we have someone who is on the other side of the political aisle, when we can't even agree on the color of the sky these days across political divisions. I think it is a wonderful moment when we see people of different political parties actually come together and agree on the solutions. As you just heard, our mayor and myself, we, we agree on this issue and, and what to do with it. And I think we have to name that because if we can create a coalition between the private sector and the public sector, a coalition of people, whether they're independents, Republicans or Democrats, that is worth acknowledging and building a coalition to actually address this. And I will go further and sometimes say that, yeah, there are moments where people actually are trying to politicize this and try and move us away from the solutions that we know work, to give people like a temporary reprieve and a belief that if we just, if we just go in and force everyone out of a city who's homeless, that will solve it. And we, that, it doesn't. All it does is move them to Ada or move them to Tulsa. And, and that, so I would say, those are the moments I'm trying to get us to avoid is having a coalition of people who actually, across political class, whatever divides, that are ready to really hunker down and get to work on the actual solutions here.
Okay, so I don't know that we actually have a motion to defer, but we would certainly entertain that if folks are done discussing. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. This is for a two-week deferral of this particular item. Passes 6 to 3. All right. That's deferred for two weeks. Now, we'll move forward to Item AH, which had a resident sign up to speak. Wendy Hampton, perhaps? Wendy? If you wouldn't mind saying your name and address and keep your remarks to three minutes or less. This is on Item AH.
Yes, Wendy Hampton, Executive Director of the Western Avenue Association, and my address is 3813 East Sorghum Mill, Edmond, Oklahoma, 73034. And just to recap what you guys were talking about, in our specific district, we are having major problems with the homelessness. It is affecting our business owners. It is affecting our residents. We definitely support you moving forward with approving that funding. I agree with James. It's not an increase. It's just to keep it flat the way it is. And we definitely need more money because the amount of money we have right now is not affecting anything. We email and call the Action Center multiple times a week, and we haven't seen anyone. I call the police department at least once a week. We don't see anyone. So, if we can have more caseworkers out there helping remove 90% of them who do want to go to a home, myself and my district agree, and we would love for you to approve that. So, that's just my two cents on that. We're also very excited and grateful that the GEO bond passed. And thank you for the improvements that we have for our district. So, we're excited about that. Just some things that we've been working on. Our flagship event is this week, Taste of Western. We are focusing on raising money this year for our Route 66 celebration next year. We are going to be the official location for the Centennial Car Show on September 26. So, if you guys want to come out to that, that would be appreciative. Yeah, so I'd really just want to say we're thankful for our funds, and we hope that you all vote unanimously to approve. And that's all, unless anyone has any questions from me.
I just want to say, your district was literally on my mind when I was saying the words I was. Because I've been, I've been following. So, thank you. And also, congrats on the bond. I'm so excited. I don't know. I think I've mentioned to you before, you all as a district, the streetscape that you all did inspired me years ago to start thinking about that work for other main streets across Ward 2. So, just wanted to say I'm grateful for your leadership and your work there.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Item AS. Councilman Stenssif.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is about a preliminary engineering report for Lone Oak Park. There is a summary on the engineering report, and I wanted Debbie Miller to come up. We need one point of clarification concerning the report, and I want to, I do want to emphasize that this is preliminary. We're going to continue to look at this. This is a beginning stage. And so, with that, I'll turn it over to Debbie to clarify that one point.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Debbie Miller with the Public Works Department. This is a preliminary report for the Lone Oak Park up at 164th and Portland. The preliminary report does show some raised platforms to meet the floodplain requirements, but as we move forward with the final plans, we will adjust that alignment to where it'll be an at-grade at the ground level for the trail. And then there are several phases as we move forward. That will come back to you.
You know, I've mentioned this before, and I'm really excited about Lone Oak Park, but parks take a lot of time. And I talked about Martin Nature Park last week, and, you know, we acquired the land in 1961, but the park didn't open its doors till 1975. And with this park, we've dealt with culverts, Bluff Creek. We dealt with FEMA. We dealt with roads. We've dealt with roads, whether they're owned by the county or the city, and making those determinations. And so, a lot of work has gone into this, and I want to thank our great Parks Director, Melinda McMillan Miller. I want to thank Debbie Miller, who does outstanding works at Public Works as our Public Works Director. I want to thank Debbie Martin, Tim Smith, but I especially want to thank Estella Hernandez from Senator Langford's office that really helped us when we were dealing with Bluff Creek and some issues with FEMA. So, thanks, everybody, for... So, thanks, everybody, for getting us to this point. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Councilman Cooper. You wanted to talk about item AZ.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to hear more about this project. I was pleasantly surprised, because I know from the bond, we have I-44, I'm sorry, I went into I-44 things today. We have Northwest Expressway and May Avenue from the infamous bridge collapse in 2016 from our, we know that our previous bond is going to be replacing that bridge. I was aware of it, but it wasn't until my bond representative, Lindsay Peever, brought to my attention that we're also going to be doing this other bridge here at I-44 and May, and I was wondering if we could hear a little bit more information about it? Wait, did I get it right? Yes, AZ.
Good morning. This is a project at I-44 of May. If you've ever driven north, going over I-44 on the May Avenue, there's a big bump. And so, we are trying to, this project will fix that. The approach is, we're actually not replacing that bridge. That would be an ODOT project, but this will take care of that. We'll redo the approaches coming up to the bridge, and if there's any bridge work, we can work with ODOT. The great thing about this project is Senator Weiss gave us $2.4 million as a congressionally-directed spending program. So, we've been, we've known this has been an issue, so we finally found some funding to help us get that done.
Neato mosquito. Okay, thank you.
All right, now we have a presentation for item BQ.
Yes, David Todd. I'm sorry, David Todd will give us an introduction on this item. This is on the youth centers, on the preliminary report for the youth centers. I'll let David take that.
Morning, David Todd, MAPS Program Manager. Today, we have the preliminary report for the much-awaited first MAPS for Youth Center. Remember, there's four in the program. This is the first one, and this is the preliminary report. Colin Fleck is here today from Bacchus Payne to take you through this great design.
Thank you for having me. Excited to be here. I know that the Thunder Arena was really exciting. I think the youth centers is a little bit more exciting personally, but no offense, great job, Mr. Manica. Just wanted to say that we're grateful to be here. We've, we've worked with some really great people. There's been a lot of people put effort into this. There's a lot of heart in it. Tina Belcik with the Boys and Girls Club, the MAPS Office, everyone has really worked well together, and this is a great culmination of that effort. So, if you all remember from the site selection process back over the last couple of years, we've selected these sites based on area of need, and this is the first of those four. So, this was our objective, was to try and instill these safe places for kids to go as an after-school program and a summer program. I won't drag you through all of the different program areas. All I wanted to point to is that we've got a full program for this first youth center. So, we don't have anything excluded from this program. So, the operator should have everything that they need to run the successful youth center at Woodson Park. Just to draw your attention to the project area, if you're not familiar, this is at Southwest 29th and I-44. The west side of the park has already been built out with soccer fields, baseball fields. The south side of the park recently finished up a year or two ago with the softball field, soccer field combos. And so, this site that has some flood zones on the north side, just south of that fire station, so that, that box that you see there in the middle is generally where we're looking to build. And as we zoom in, you'll see the, the existing buildings that are in the northeast corner of this map here are the existing In Grade Pool and Pool Building. There's a basketball gymnasium there in the middle. And then, on the east side is the current Boys and Girls Club. It's just an elementary school program right now. It used to be a senior wellness center back in the day. And so, what we're planning to do is to keep Southwest 33rd Street as long as we can, and to extend off of that, we're trying to reuse as much of this parking as we can and reduce new parking. So, what we are proposing is that we just tie onto the end of that existing Southwest 33rd Street with a roundabout and some new parking. And what we're trying to do is, we're trying to spread out these drop-off and pickup areas, because that's one of the current problems at the Memorial Park facility. They spill out their, their traffic lanes onto Western Avenue, and it becomes a larger traffic issue. What we like here is that we can pull cars in, and we can actually spread them out. We can have a high school drop-off pickup area and a youth drop-off and pickup area. It is a four-sided building, so we're trying to direct attention to all four sides of this building, to the south of the park, back to the east to May. It's really got great visibility along I-44 as you travel north and south, so we want to be mindful of that. You'll see over on the west side, we've got a fenced-in soccer field with a footsaw, basketball court combo, some playground areas. And so, right now, we're just dedicating that space. We're, we're trying to see what we can do with getting some of those items in as alternates in our budget. Let's see here, go ahead and go into the floor plan. So, the first thing that Tina, the, the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club, told us whenever we first met, was that safety and security of the kids was the number-one thing that she was concerned with. So, I've had that in my head from day one. Our whole team has been working to make sure that we keep kids safe while they're in this facility, so we are looking at ballistic-rated glazing on some of the vestibules. And we're also making sure that we've got line of sight from the front desk to both of the entries. That is one of the things that the kids like, is that the older kids don't want to be seen walking in with the little kids, and so, they've got their own entry there on the east. I don't know if this will work. No. So, there's an entry on the east to the teen suite, and there's an entry on the south for the youth suite, and the front desk has really good visibility of both of those. And both suites are partitioned off from the main lobby, the community space, and the gymnasium, which can be used on the weekends and after hours. And so, there, there's multiple levels of entry to get to where the kids are actually going to be located. And then, we've also got a storm shelter, safe room type of space in the, where we've got some of the other program areas for inclement weather or active shooter-type situations. The western half of this floor plan, on the west side of the gymnasium, is primarily the youth suite. We've got youth lounges, we've got classrooms, we've got breakout suites, we've got a dining hall and kitchen, a dance studio, an art studio, a music studio. The administrative suite has counseling offices, offices for staff, break rooms and work rooms. And then, our, our community space has a concession stand that can double as a small catering kitchen. We can have community events. That's that yellow block there on the bottom right. And then, we've got our double gymnasium in the middle, and so, that will serve the kids during the day, and they can host basketball tournaments or other events on the weekend. We've got porches and outdoor spaces for the, for both sides, the teen and the youth. And then, on the western bottom-left corner there, you'll see we've got kind of our service entry, back-of-house for the kitchen, deliveries, and things like that. Another thing that we wanted to, to try and do, and something that we continued to hear Tina say, is we don't want this to look like a, like a jail or a prison. We want it to look like a happy place that kids want to go to. We wanted to integrate colors, and this is in the southwest part of town. It's, you know, more of a Hispanic-centric culture down there, and so, we wanted to play to that a little bit with our color schemes and materials. So, we're, we're looking at concrete block and prefinished metal, which helps us with our budget as well. And then, we wanted to infuse a little bit of color where we could. So, this is our front elevation of the south entry of the building. And you'll notice that we've got our concrete block, we've got kind of a speckling of different colors of that and textures. And then, our, our lobby space is actually projected up as a clear-story window with some translucent panels, so that we can bring daylighting into this lobby space and really make it bright and welcoming. So, we've got some of the colors that were on that color palette integrated into these frames at the entry. And then, you'll see the, the gymnasium in the back is actually a metal building with a terracotta color cladding on it. And we think we've got a really good opportunity for some signage up on these translucent panels that will actually glow at night as well. And so, as we move around the building, just at different angles here, you'll notice the different volumes of space and the different opportunities for integrating color. This is an aerial view from the southeast, so this is kind of a bird's-eye view. And you can see on this side, we've got the, the youth entry on the east. And this is the primary entrance from southwest 33rd off of May, so all vehicles will come from this approach. And then, at night, we think we have a good opportunity to let it glow, have a signage opportunity, really be a beacon at all times of day for the community. And then, to the interior, this is that, the lobby space that you'll see that's projected up, that's got the translucent panels on it. It's got clear-story windows, so it's bringing light in, but it also keeps fewer windows on the ground, opportunities for break-ins and vandalism. So, we're, we're looking at some sort of a public art element with either kites or umbrellas or something like that, that brings some color to the interiors here. We've got the Youth of the Year Award wall and views into the gymnasium, so there's a lot of transparency and visibility. And looking back the opposite direction, just more color and, and vibrance in this space. And the front desk is the main control point. The gymnasium, we're looking at different colors and textures to try and keep it nice and bright, and avoid it feeling sterile. And the corridors will have tile and rounded corners for durability and cleanability. And then, the, the youth suites are large volumes, bright, colorful places for kids to play, different types of activities. We're looking at overhead doors to make some of these rooms expandable and flexible, and the dining hall as well. Let's see, I think we're going to just go past, this is just a recap of the floor plan. If anyone has any questions, I've been moving kind of quick.
This is a really exciting day to see Phase One with this preliminary report. I'm reminded, back in 2016, a group of people came together, starting to look at these wellness centers, and to see these renditions and drawings is, is really exciting, and it was people like Peter DeLeese and Tim McLaughlin and Chief Bill Cuddy, and they all dreamt of coming up with these youth centers. And we're starting to see them become a reality, reality today. I think one of the neatest things is Tim, a few months ago, found some of the original notes from these early meetings, and he had them blown up, and they, they hang on my wall in my office, and I'm very proud of those. So, thank you for your work, and congratulations on getting us to this point.
Thank you. And I, like I mentioned, there's been a lot of people, and just as you point out there, there's many years, many people putting a lot of effort into this, so it is really exciting. Let's see, so we've got, our budget is, we've got some different alternates and base bids. We're looking at a 13, almost $14 million base bid with a few different alternates that will take us up into the 20 to $21 million range for this project. Right now, our preliminary report, we submitted in October, and final plans, we believe, will be done in April, with bidding and construction following there in the summer. Around a 14 to 18-month construction schedule, so, you know, we think end of 2027, this first one will be open. And any other questions you all have, I'd be happy to take. All right. Thank you all.
Exciting, thanks. All right, that concludes all presentations and discussions for the consent docket, so we can now adopt it in its entirety, except for those items previously deferred or passed. And again, I would mention, add to that item CC. We have a motion and a second. Passes unanimously. Item 10 is the concurrence docket. We have items A through Q we could take with one motion. We have a motion and a second. Passes unanimously. Okay, item 11 are items for individual consideration. We have a resident who signed up to just make a statement, I guess, on all the zoning cases, sort of. Maybe we'll start there. If you could state your name and address and keep your remarks to three minutes or less.
My name is Alicia Standifer. My address is 1413 Teakwood Drive in Norman, Oklahoma. I'm the property manager. I'm sorry, oh, can y'all hear me now?
Better, yeah.
Okay. Alicia Standifer, 131413 Teakwood Drive in Norman. I'm the property manager for Earth Properties 102 and 110, and Plains, Great Plains, I don't remember the name, sorry. I don't do that one much. I need to see if we can rezone 20 Southeast 27th over to residential, so they can get an appraisal and get it refinanced for housing.
So, you're saying you have a, I'm sorry, you're, you're an applicant.
Applicant.
So, you wrote on here that you wanted to talk, all the cases were listed.
Okay, so.
Which case are you actually here for?
So, it's A, it's AD, E, F, and G. So, B and C, my husband is actually working on a property on the same street as that, but it is not theirs, so I got them confused.
I now understand.
So, B and C is not with.
So, you're multiple cases.
Yes.
Got it. All right, so you are, in fact, relative to item A, on the, at the very least.
Yes.
So, Councilwoman Hammond.
Yeah, these are all pretty straightforward, just rezoning to single-family or residential, so move for approval.
So, this will just be on A. We're going to have to take them one by one.
Right.
And you're not completely in order, so you're going to come and go, but.
Right, okay, sorry.
Item A for now. We'll see if we can get a motion and a second on that. Cast your votes. Okay, item 11B is in ordinance on final hearing, rezoning 625 East U-Banks from R1, R2. Councilman Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a simple rezon case for taking it from single-family to multifamily. I'll point out that it is close to Lincoln and close to our great Homeland Grocery Store, so we want more customers to live in the area, so I'm going to move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item 11C is in ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 629 East U-Banks from R1 to R3. Back to you, Councilman Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. Same thing, but right next door. I move approval. Excuse me, this is a quadplex, but same, same motivation.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11D is in ordinance on final hearing, it was recommended for approval, rezoning 2 Southeast 27th from I-2 to R1. Councilwoman Hammond. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item E is in ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 17 Southeast 27th from I-2 to R1. Councilwoman Hammond.
I'll move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11F is an ordinance on final hearing, it was recommended for approval, rezoning 27 Southeast 27th from I-2 to R1. Councilwoman Hammond.
I'll move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11G is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 34 Southeast 27th from I-2 to R1. Councilwoman Hammond.
I'll move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Passes unanimously. I think that's all your cases, thank you. Okay, 11H is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 1325 East Heffner Road from PUD 1443 to PUD 1529. Councilman Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. This is adding some great new housing to our community in Ward 7, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item I was previously deferred, which brings us to item J. This is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 12635 North Morgan from AA to PUD 2091. Councilman Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone sign up to speak?
They have not.
Okay. I met with the developers representative, and we are moving for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item K is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 16901 North Portland from PUD 737 to PUD 2093. Councilman Stone Cypher.
Amy, any protests?
No.
I'd move for approval at this time.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11L is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 1404 Northwest 122nd from R1 and PUD 393 to PUD 2095. There's also an amendment to the master design statement. Councilman Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, supporting some more housing being built in our community in Ward 7, I move approval.
And I'm gonna assume that is a motion for the amendment.
Oh, excuse me, a motion, let me move the amendment first, move approval of the amendment, excuse me.
I'll drag in on that. We have a motion and a second for the amendment founded L1. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and now we'll take up the ordinance founded L2.
And I move approval of the item.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item M1 is an amendment to the master design statement that relates to item M2, which is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 3223 Northwest 178th from PUD 1891, SPUD 1705. This item was deferred several times previously. Councilman Stone Cypher.
Thank you. I think we first need to move for the amendment, is that correct, David?
Good morning, David Box, 525 Northwest 11th Street. So, on this one, we need to amend the amendment to add the word evergreen, and then make clear that the version being adopted is the October 17th version of the SPUD, which added those words regarding the evergreen trees, which is very important to the neighbors to the south.
That's my motion.
That's, amendment to the amendment, okay. As stated, let's see if we can take that up electronically. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
I did wanna thank Mayor, if it's okay, Barbie Taylor from Rose Creek, who was instrumental in moving this forward. Her father was former Mayor Guy Liebman, and she was a big help, thank you.
All right, so now we need to move the amendment as amended? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now we're on M2. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously. Item N is an ordinance on final hearing, it was recommended for approval, rezoning 10203 Northwest 10th from R1 to SPUD 1746. And we do have someone signed up to speak, Councilman Carter, but I do not know their position on the matter.
Okay, let's listen to them.
All right, James Macy? James Macy? Okay, guess they're not here.
You're more than welcome to, I guess. I don't know that it's needed.
Are you for the applicant?
Yes, Jessica Boywood Johnson and Associates, representing the applicant, Wendy Sheridan. I am happy to answer any questions, I know there were several protests on this one, so I just wanted to.
Actually, I was just going to say thank you to Johnson Associates and Mark, I know he's on his honeymoon right now, but for working with the residents as well as the developer, and the developer willing to make some of the concessions that they did. I know we're not gonna make everybody happy in this one, but at this moment, we will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item O is an ordinance on final hearing, it was recommended for approval, rezoning 2308 North Florida from R1 and UC to SPUD 1764. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, this is just two new dwellings on D lots in the Gatewood neighborhood, so I will move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item P is an ordinance on final hearing, it was recommended for approval, rezoning 14809 Southeast 149th from AA to SPUD 1770. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a small commercial area going in off Southeast 149th, recommended for approval with no protests, so I will move for its approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item Q is an ordinance on final hearing, it was recommended for approval, rezoning 2620 South Mustang from AA to SPUD 1771. Councilwoman Abers. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11R is an ordinance on final hearing, it was recommended for approval at 1003 South Penn, going from C3 and SRODD to SPD 1772. Councilwoman Hammond.
I'll move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Passes unanimously. Item 11S is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, closing a portion of the east-west right-of-way at Northeast 115th, east of Eckor. Councilman Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. Pretty simple, just closing the right-of-way, has full support of the Planning Commission. I move approval.
We have a motion, motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item T is an ordinance on final hearing, closing 50 feet of the 20-foot east-west alley in Block 1 of Epworth Edition, et cetera. Councilman Cooper.
Yes, this is just an, oh, almost, there we go. Yeah, this is an item that is actually going to, if you look at that, there's already a new development there, and so this is just to help with the parking a little bit, so I would move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item U is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, closing a portion of the east-west alley in Block 1 of Lindley's Edition, et cetera. Councilwoman Hammond.
I'll move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item V is an ordinance on final hearing, closing a portion of the north-south utility easement on Lot 10 and Block 10 of Abbott Lake, et cetera. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, yep, it's a 5 by 30 foot, and I'll move for its approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item W is an ordinance on final hearing, it was recommended for denial, rezoning 12516 Roberts Road from AA to SPD 173. There is enough protests here that if a motion were made to approve, that would require a supermajority. Councilman Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we're getting ready to hear from the applicant about a motion to defer, so.
Yes, Mason Schwartz, 522 Call Core Drive, on behalf of the applicant. We are asking for a two-week continuance. This case involves our client, the seller, has a property under contract for a buyer. So, the buyer is actively involved in any revisions to these SPUD. A large portion of the protesters are represented by Mr. Kelly Work, who's here. Mr. Kelly Work represented yesterday that he does not have a problem with the continuance. We are working through active negotiations, revisions on the SPUD document. Hopefully, we can come to something that will at least satisfy his group in the next two weeks, if possible. So, we would ask for the continuance until I believe it is November 4th.
Thank you. I'm gonna move that we continue this item till the November 4th meeting of the council.
There's a motion to defer with a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item X is a public hearing, item X1 is a public hearing regarding the Western Avenue Business Improvement District. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
If not, so we'll advance to the resolution, founded X2, adopting and confirming an assessment role for the Western Avenue Business Improvement District. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item Y is related, it's an ordinance on final hearing, adopting and setting the assessment role for the Western Avenue Business Improvement District. There's no presentation, we can take a motion. Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item Z is an ordinance on final hearing relating to parks. This is the second of two meetings, there was a presentation at the previous meeting. This is the ordinance, you may recall, codifying our golf commission, which had previously been, existed only through an agreement between city and PPA. This will make it a little more official after all these years. So, if there's no discussion or questions, we could take a motion to adopt this ordinance. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, AA1 is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
If not, so we'll advance to the resolution, declaring the structures are dilapidated, founded AA2. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. AB1 is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures here listed. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
If not, so we'll advance to the resolution, founded AB2, declaring the structures are unsecured. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. AC1 is a public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, and so we'll advance to the resolution, founded AC2, declaring the buildings are abandoned. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. AD1 is our second public hearing regarding amending the June 18th, 2024 resolution approving certain fire and other sales tax expenditures. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
If not, and so we have the resolution at AD2, amending the June 18th, 2024 resolution regarding fire expenditures. This is the second of two meetings on this topic, I believe we had a little bit of a presentation last time. There's a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, AE is a resolution, receiving an amendment to the comp plan, and I believe we have a presentation.
Jeff Butler, our planning director, give us a quick update on this proposed item.
Thank you. I'll take you through a few slides briefly, but mainly this is intended to just update the comp plan. I've described it as a minor update. We've got several maps that we'll be updating, some information in the back of the plan that's meant to be designed for kind of a, some data that is, helps us to remain accountable and see how we're doing. So, the maps relate mainly to water lines and so forth. There we go. I'll skip to those. So, to begin with, we've got a couple of areas that we have, that the Planning Commission decided to bring into the urban low area, which is kind of this area in the northwest of the city. There's a lot of water and sewer expansion, utilities are expanding as the demand for residential development grows. So, there's a couple, you can see kind of in the middle slide there, a couple additions that are now in a situation that can be suburban, developed at a suburban density. We eliminated, there, when we originally did the comprehensive plan back in 2015, we weren't as far along now as we are with transit planning, so we've removed a few, these red circles that you see, we've removed a few areas that had previously been indicated as transit-oriented development centers. As the city grows, we can certainly expand, and we'll be planning additional transit as the decades roll by. But now that we have a much better idea of what's going on and what will be going on, we decided to remove these, just to reflect better what our current reality is. We also added a, with the mega site annexation on the southwest of the city, we've given it an appropriate designation. That doesn't automatically happen when we bring in a piece of land, so we needed to do that as part of the comprehensive plan amendment. And here are the maps that I mentioned earlier, as our sewer and water systems expand, we like to keep those maps updated in the comprehensive plan. So, there's, you can kind of see just a gradual change as we expand a little bit. And finally, emergency services, as we add fire stations, we're able to serve a little bit larger area. So, you see some of the stations, and we have notably in the northwest, where we're going to have a new station, so we're seeing that expanded coverage area there. We expect as we add more stations, now that the 2025 bond has been approved, that we will see even more coverage in the future. And we've also updated some environmentally sensitive area maps, made some minor adjustments there. And finally, here are the tables that I mentioned earlier, where we kind of track how we're doing. There's some indicators, data indicators, so that people can see how we've done over the past five years or so. And we continue to update those every so often. And with that, I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. All right, we can take up the resolution. All right, we can take up the resolution then, found at AE. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now we have three executive sessions. We'll take the votes on each one to go into executive session, and then we'll handle them at the end of our other business. First up is AF. This is regarding Gallo v. City of OKC. Motion and a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item AG is an executive session on McGuffey v. Progressive Parking, City of OKC, et cetera. Motion and a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. AH is an executive session in the case of Lock Supply v. OKC. Move a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Eleven A one, I'm sorry, AI one, our claims recommended for denial, executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eleven AJ one, our claims recommended for approval, executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. That concludes votes for today. Item twelve, our comments from council, word one. Word two?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. City Clerk, yes, thank you. Cool. I wanted to extend my gratitude to city staff who made possible this moment where we installed, and I'll enlarge the photo here, we installed a plaque at the New Multi-Use Trail on Northwest Thirtyeth Street in a Long Shepherd neighborhood. The folk you see in this photo, Ryan Marshall lives in Cleveland neighborhood. He advocated for, for this trail. But there are some other familiar faces, I'm guessing for some of you with longer memories. You'll see April and Samantha, who are the daughters of Sam Bowman, who's my predecessor in word two. He served on city council. You'll see Jane Wheeler, who was Sam's partner. And we installed this plaque because Councilor Bowman was the first city councillor since World War Two to advocate for sidewalk funding. We had not built sidewalks in the city since World War Two. In fact, we stopped requiring the building of those sidewalks. And before Sam passed away a couple of years ago, Debbie Martin in our council office actually found Sam's final letter, his resignation letter, where he walked us through that history. And so Maps Three is the first sidewalk funding that the city has had since World War Two. And he also advocated, not only for that funding, but for a sidewalk master plan. And so now this plaque exists in this multi-use trail, honoring that history. This trail will connect the sidewalks to the west at May Avenue, where you'll find Northwest Class and High School. So students will now have an access, instead of walking on Thirtyeth, which we've seen students do, or walking in a right-of-way so close to traffic with no sidewalks, that's now gonna be something they'll have access to. Cleveland neighbors asked all the time about access to Swatik Park, and they didn't have it. And the way Ryan tells it is a lot of the residents, their families, they, they do not go to Swatik because they did not have that connectivity. This connectivity here gets them also to a new, new sidewalks on Villa that go all the way down to about General Pershing, and a new bike, protected bike path there, too. And then these sidewalks continue to the east to Pennsylvania, and then go all the way down into the Asian District and ultimately the Paseo. So it was really an honor to honor my predecessor, and it was wonderful to see Sam's family there. We can remove this. Thank you so much. And really, thank you to Director Miller and her team for helping make this possible, Shamika Smith, Mike Clark, and Justin, and Justin Henry and Max Harris over in planning as well. Couple more comments, if I might. Honored to do this work. I'm largely reflecting, I find myself, as my mother, as one of the biggest Thunder fans, she's very excited. She disconnected her cable, and she was really worried that she was not gonna be able to watch some of the local channels and see the games, but bless her heart, she actually found an antenna to put on her TV. And she texted me earlier this morning, she's like, you'd be so proud of me? I'm, I'm gonna be able to watch the Thunder on NBC tonight. And so she's, she's, she's ready for, for the game. I, I think I see the mayor's got a, is that some sort of Thunder swag? Okay. All right. I had a feeling that was what was happening over there. But I actually mentioned my mother, not just because she's arguably the city's biggest Thunder fan, but I mentioned her because in word two, about a week ago, CSU Youth asked me to come to Pony Boy, which is, of course, a reference to The Outsiders. And it was on National Coming Out Day. And National Coming Out Day exists within LGBT History Month, which we are in right now. And as the first openly gay council member, I always think about one of the first openly gay elected officials, and that's Harvey Milk. And when I think of the sidewalk, the multi-use trail, I always think of this quote from Harvey Milk, who fell victim to an assassin's bullet when he was elected in the nineteen seventies. But this was the quote, and it just guides me, and I think of that, that new infrastructure all the time. He says, "Let's make no mistake about this. The American dream starts with the neighborhoods. If we wish to rebuild our cities, we must first rebuild our neighborhoods. And to do that, we must understand that the quality of life is more important than the standard of living. To sit on the front steps, whether it's a veranda in a small town or a concrete stoop in a big city, and to talk with our neighbors and our neighborhoods is infinitely more important than to huddle on the living room lounger and watch a make-believe world and not quite living color." In Sam's final letter, his ask for us to invest in sidewalks was an argument, he said, based in quality of life. He said he was ready for Maps to start investing, not just in big projects, but truly in our residents' quality of life. And so that is really heavy on my mind because of National Coming Out Day. When my mother, when I came out to her when I was nineteen in two thousand and one, she said, "I know, and I love you." "I know, and I love you." And I'm guessing she was so ready to do that because she knew the history of discrimination and violence. And I just wanna read one of the scariest stories I've ever heard. When I saw Stephen King's It as a TV movie back in nineteen ninety, I was eight years old growing up in Midwest City. And I didn't know at the time that a real-life nineteen eighty-four Bangor, Maine murder of a gay man inspired one of the novel's scariest scenes. In real life, walking home arm-in-arm, twenty-three-year-old Charlie Howard and his boyfriend saw a car stop near them. Fifteen-year-old Jim exited, and he confronted Charlie. "Are you gay?" Jim asked. Then with two friends, Jim attacked Charlie, throwing him from the town's Main Street Bridge during a festival celebrating July Fourth and the anniversary of Bangor's founding. Asked the medic, Charlie drowned. King lived in Bangor, and with his novel It, he recreates Charlie's story, with Charlie now a gay character named Adrian, who is killed in front of his boyfriend. It's nineteen ninety TV adaptation premiered without this scene. Back then, being gay was illegal in most states, punishable in Oklahoma with a ten-year imprisonment until a two thousand and three United States Supreme Court decision ruled such laws unconstitutional. My mother accepted me judgment-free two years earlier because she knew the real danger to my body out there, but she also knew that the laws were not on my side and that this was the consequence facing me. I say that during LGBT History Month because we must always remember where we've come from to celebrate where we are now, and that is in a much more accepting city, a much safer city, whether it's the new sidewalks we're putting in that keep our neighborhoods safer and our residents safer, whether it is the acceptance and the non-judgment that we bring to residents regardless of whom they love. Unfortunately, though, we have some statistics, I call them the forties here, that I would like to bring to bear. Going back to homelessness, LGBT youth make up forty percent of youth homelessness. And they make up forty percent of youth homelessness because too many of our kids, whether they live in Ada or Oklahoma City, unfortunately don't have a Mama Cooper. They don't have the mother or the father who says to them, "I know, and I love you. And now let's watch the Thunder." And so they run away. They run away, and the city had not built the youth centers you saw in the presentations earlier today. There's no place for them to go. Unfortunately, then, that leads, and this is especially true for our transgender residents, who we know from data are likely to report, forty percent of them have attempted to take their own lives. Forty percent of our transgender residents, though they make up about one percent of the population. These numbers of, when it comes to poverty, are even higher amongst our transgender neighbors. If you are transgender and Latino, you are forty-eight percent more likely to experience poverty. If you are transgender and black, you are thirty-nine percent more likely to experience poverty. If you are LGBTQ, you make up, in the workforce, you are more likely to work in retail, in hospitality, and not have access to healthcare. So these are the statistics, the real statistics when it comes to can you get a job? Can you provide for yourself and pay the rent and the mortgage? And unfortunately, a history of discrimination, a history that said that queer people belong in prison, that they weren't human, that they weren't a part of the American dream in our neighborhoods. We have to acknowledge that history if we're gonna move forward and actually address this data. And I think LGBT History Month is the moment to do it. And for any parent out there who's struggling with how do you talk to your child, I have a Mama Cooper who is ready to talk to you about it. I have a Mama Cooper who's also ready to talk to you about every Thunder stat you could ever want to know. And I just want to say to her publicly today during LGBT History Month how grateful I am that I get to share her story, the story of someone who dropped out of school in the seventh grade and then picked herself back up and became a registered nurse. I'm just so grateful that someone like she exists in this city. And to anyone who is lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender out there, please hear my mother's love and non-judgment and carry it in your heart when those voices tell you, you are not worthy of love, because you are. And you need to hear that, not just in LGBTQ History Month, you need to hear that every day of every month, because it is true. So thank you for letting me share that. That was the message I shared at Pony Boy in word two, and it's the message I'm happy to bring here today to city council.
Thank you, word three. Word four. Word five. Word six. Word seven. Word eight.
Just briefly, hats off to Airport Director Jeff Mulder. He announced Friday that we have a new direct flight from Oklahoma City to Cancun, Mexico. There's a ribbon cutting at six thirty AM. The flight board's at eight thirty AM. I want to thank American Airlines for this direct flight, because I think direct flights are imperative and much needed for the success and growth of this city. So thank you, American Airlines, for this direct flight.
Yeah, big deal. First international flight in modern times. All right, that concludes comments from council, which brings us to item thirteen, citizens to be heard. Ronnie Kirk.
My name is Ronnie Kirk. My address is twenty-three, twenty-eight, North Missouri. Friday, I explained to the, I was on a radio talk show, and I explained to the people about the, the bills passing. Most of the things that were offered has already been done to the northeast side of town. The bike trails, the walking trails, the park areas, the street pavings, the addition to Douglas High School, the addition to our library, it's been done three months ago. They still working on Douglas today. Most of the streets in Capitol Hill is already paved, and they're over there paving more right now. The infrastructure, that's good. When you cross Bryant, you go down to Sooner Road, you can look on both sides of the street. They're putting the driveways in. As we speak, it's not something they're finna start doing, it's something they already have been doing. They put the water, a lot of people don't know, when they see them orange and red and blue pipes now outside the street, they won't tear your yard up no more. They're putting that stuff underground, and most of that stuff is already finished. Now, when it comes to this Clara Lupa Bridge, it's a special word Ameri used. Let me think for a second. It's not, Clara Lupa Bridge was built fifty years ago. When they build bridges, they bridge them to last seventy-five years. So the word is enhancement. We need that enhancement for Clara Lupa Bridge. Trim those trees, brighten the lights around it. Paint that bridge. That's what I come down there and say today, that part of this bill, hope it don't take another ten years, we got the money today. I want to say thank y'all today. So let's get working on that. There's not much to ask, you probably sent a crew out there.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Within a week and have that done. Thank you.
Thank you. Adele Marie Alex. I have you state your name and address and keep your remarks for three minutes or less.
Good morning. My name is Adele Marie Alex. I'm a senior at Oklahoma City University, a student organizer, a journalist, and a proud lesbian. Speaking of lesbians, I actually saw you, Mayor Holt, at the Indigo Girls concert on Saturday night. You were seated right behind me the whole time. I watched as you spoke on stage, and I listened as the Indigo Girls thanked you. They said, "This is what happens when a city invests in its people. Investing in your people is not just about funding or infrastructure, it's about having the courage of your convictions. It means ensuring that trans and queer residents of this city are not treated as expendable." I've heard different stories about Mayor Holt and this council. Some describe you as an ally to the queer community, and others say you hesitate when it matters most. But allyship is not measured by pride parades or public gestures, it's measured by action, what you do when the vulnerable are under attack. Which brings me to Paula, our former Director of Counseling Services at OCU, where you, Mayor Holt, serve as Dean of the Law School. Paula is a transgender woman, but most importantly, she is a cherished member of this community. She built a safe haven where OCU's students knew they were seen and supported. Paula's firing came after she exercised her right to free speech in a post about Charlie Kirk, a person who had actively targeted our community, calling us a social contagion. Speaking out- Speaking out about oppression should never be grounds for losing one's livelihood, and yet that is exactly what happened on your watch. Clients learned of the termination in an email claiming she had left her position, which implies consent. There was no transition plan for these clients, no effort to ensure continuity of care, placing countless individuals directly at risk, and this termination came without policy-based justification. I've done my due diligence. I organized a petition advocating for Paula, which so far has gathered over 1,000 signatures from the community and everyone at OCU. I communicated respectfully with President Kenneth Evans and his office, yet despite seven email exchanges and repeated attempts to schedule a meeting, the administration has now fallen silent. Mayor Holt, on Saturday night, you stood behind myself and a group of young queer OKC residents, soaking up applause for having invested in your people. Does your investment include your trans residents, your queer residents, your students, whose dissent has been met with silence? To every member of the council here today, this is your moment to act with integrity, to demonstrate that Oklahoma City's commitment to inclusion is authentic.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Mayor Holt, prove to us that your oath carries weight. Prove to us that we can believe in the story of a man who's an ally to the queer community. Prove to us that this city truly invests in all its people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Samuel Terry. Mr. Terry, if you would state your name and address and keep your remarks to three minutes.
My name is Samuel Terry. My address is 11300 North Lee Avenue, Oklahoma City. I can't talk as fast as she did because I'm a Vietnam veteran and I suffer from PTSD, so I'll try to put the burden back on the city like it's been. I was up here in two, well, I bought my land in 2000. Anyway, I bought my land, and I was here before the council because of the same issue that I'm here for now. And the, the, the gentleman that was here at the time, Charles Locke, went before the committee. It was December, well, my note says it's December 15, 2016. And he said that as a result of me coming before the council and as a result of the issues that were at hand, that the city would remove the charge of the, that the county had placed for removing the grass and everything. Okay, my, my problem is, is that the burden of proof was on me when the city code enforcement. I don't have any problem with the code enforcement people, but the thing is, is that this issue has already been discussed, and I have already been relieved. No, I haven't touched it, I haven't touched the area since the city has already said that they were being liable for it. But my issue is, is that because the city is not doing their due diligence in keeping records, how, they're putting the burden back on me, and that's not fair. That is not fair. So I hope, I don't know if the city, the, whatever, the, anyway. Any questions?
We can have a staff member talk to you after the meeting and get the information on the property and what the issues are.
Okay.
All right?
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That concludes Citizens to Be Heard. We're now going to go do those three executive sessions, and then we'll come back.
And that brings us to item 14, adjournment. We are adjourned.